Is Casey W. on the call yet?
I don't see her on the call, Mayor.
No, Mayor, she's not on. Let's give a minute or two and then we'll start.
She's in the attendee section.
Sam, can you please make me the hold so I can change?
I am here, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay, if everybody present, I'll call to order the Schenectady Urban Renewal Agency. The first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from September 21st, 2020. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Thank you. The next item is the transfer of property, except the transfer of property from the city of Schenectady for you in resolution 2021-01. Entertain a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is carried. No other business to come before the agency. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Agency stands adjourned. Thank you very much. Mr. Motivaren, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the City Caucus meeting to order for Monday, March 8th, 2021. We have three public hearings this evening. If the clerk can please read Public Hearing Number One.
Public Hearing Number One, Regarding Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative.
Public Hearing Number Two, if the clerk can please read.
Public Hearing Number Two, Regarding the Acceptance of Ownership for North End Drive.
Public Hearing Number Three, if the clerk can please read.
Public Hearing Number Three, Regarding the 2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report to CAPR.
Thank you. We have seventeen items for original consideration. If the clerk can please read Item Number One.
Item Number One for Original Consideration, A Resolution Calling for a Public Hearing to Amend Chapter 93 of the Code of the City of Schenectady.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Two, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Two for Original Consideration, A Resolution Calling for a Public Hearing in relation to zoning change for multiple properties on McCollin Street.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Three, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Three for Original Consideration, A Resolution Authorizing the Transfer of 1009 Strong Street and 1011 Strong Street to the Land Reutilization Corporation of the Capital Region, and Authorization to Provide $100,000 CDBG-funded Forgivable Loan to the Capital Reutilization Corporation of the Capital Region.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent.
Mr. Motivaren, if I may, I need that one to go on a roll call vote. I need to abstain.
Item Number Three. Thank you. This will be a roll call item. Item Number Four, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Four for Original Consideration, A Resolution Declaring that the City Council is the Lead Agency and opening a thirty-day public comment period regarding the zoning change for multiple properties on McCollin Street.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Five, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Five for Original Consideration, A Resolution Authorizing a Referral to the Planning Commission Regarding a Zoning Change for Multiple Properties on McCollin Street.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Six, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Six for Original Consideration, A Resolution Authorizing the City of Schenectady to act as lead agency and issue a negative declaration for the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan project.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Seven, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Seven for Original Consideration, A Resolution Authorizing the Amendment to the Agreement between Bethesda House and the City of Schenectady for the 2020 Schenectady TBRA Program.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Eight, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Eight for Original Consideration, Resolution Authorizing the City of Schenectady to assign interest to 133 Edison Avenue to Schenectady Metroplex Development Authority and the Land Reutilization Corporation of the Capital Region.
Mr. Motivaren, sorry, this was the one I needed a roll call vote on, not number three, number eight. I apologize.
So, number eight?
Number three, I mistake. I mistake. So sorry.
So, we're gonna need to redo number three then. Ms. Michael. Item Number Three, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Three for Original Consideration, A Resolution Authorizing the Transfer of 1009 Strong Street and 1011 Strong Street to the Land Reutilization Corporation of the Capital Region, and Authorization to Provide a $100,000 CDBG-funded Forgivable Loan to the Land Reutilization Corporation of the Capital Region.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. And Item Number Eight will be a roll call item. Item Number Nine, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Nine for Original Consideration, A Resolution Authorizing a Transfer of Properties to Sura.
Ms. Michael, can you please read that back again?
Item Number Nine for Original Consideration, A Resolution Authorizing a Transfer of Properties to Sura.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Ten, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Ten for Original Consideration, A Resolution Authorizing the Sale of 313 Front Street.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Eleven, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Seven for Original Consideration, A Resolution Authorizing the Sale of 959 Vermont Avenue.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Twelve, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Twelve for Original Consideration, A Resolution Authorizing the Sale of 917 State Street to Bethesda House.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Thirteen, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Thirteen for Original Consideration, A Resolution Authorizing the Sale of 1318 Chrysler Avenue.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Fourteen, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Fourteen for Original Consideration, A Resolution Authorizing the Sale of 1422 Albany Street.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Fifteen, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Fifteen for Original Consideration, A Resolution Authorizing the Sale of 2060 Eastern Parkway.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Sixteen, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Sixteen for Original Consideration, A Resolution Honoring the John F. Kennedy Division One of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, together with the John F. Kennedy Division One of the Ladies Ancient Order of Hibernians, and all people of Irish descent throughout the city of Schenectady on the occasion of the Feast of Saint Patrick, March 17th.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Seventeen, if the clerk can please read.
Item Number Seventeen, Under Contract and Supply, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor or his designate to enter into a contract with northeast turf and irrigation for the maintenance of Schenectady Municipal Golf Course.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. If there's nothing more to come before the City Council Caucus, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you. I would like to call the City Council Meeting to order for Monday, March 8th, 2021, and I would like to call on Reverend Nicole Harris for prayer and vocation. Please proceed. Reverend Harris, are you there? Can you hear me?
I don't believe the microphone's working.
Can you please check your audio?
Oh, boy.
Reverend Harris?
We can hear you now, Reverend Harris. You were there for a second.
Now. All right. Okay. Thank you. I apologize for that. Okay, let us pray. Okay. Most gracious and wonderful God, we thank you for the opportunity to serve community. I pray for each and every elected official and staff that facilitate this meeting tonight. We pray that you would allow everything to be done decent and in order. Lord, I pray that the officials, that they would lean upon your understanding, that they would always do things in the best interest of each and every resident of Schenectady. Lord, I thank you that you have given each of us two ears and one mouth, so that we can listen to each other. So, God, open our ears, that we would listen to each other, residents and elected officials, tonight. Lord, there are important things on the agenda for tonight. So I pray that all voices are heard and understood, that we can come together for the common good of all people. So, Lord, I pray that this would be done. This is my prayer. In the name of Jesus, I do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I would like to call on Ms. Porterfield to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Michael, can you please complete the roll? Call.
Ms. Porterfield?
Here.
Ms. Deluski-Walzunis?
Here.
Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Palamani?
Here.
Mr. Motivaren?
Present.
Thank you.
We have three public hearings this evening. Reminder, we have extended the public comments for public hearing portion to four minutes. I also respectfully ask that each person comment only for the subject relevant to each public hearing itself. Public Hearing Number One, Regarding the Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative. Ms. Michael, were there any comments submitted for this public hearing? And if so, can you please read?
Yes. All right, there were, there was an email from Catherine Stevens. She writes, "Good afternoon. Let Schenectady be a leader in police reform. Community needs much more active input in our policing of our community, our home. Many of these officers don't even live here. Who are they to tell us what we need?" From Thomas Justin, he writes, "I support the thirteen All of Us demands. Police are unable and unwilling to reform. White members of the community are watching and waiting." From Chrissy Visaglia writes, "Hello. Though I am glad to see police reform on the city's agenda, I have been very disappointed in the actions suggested. Last year, the All of Us Community Action Group released a list of thirteen demands to address these issues. I support these demands and urge the government of our city to take action on them." We have an email submission from Ellie Pepper, and she writes, "Below are my comments for the public hearing regarding the Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative. There were thirteen demands put forward by the community organization All of Us. These demands were created with input from the most impacted communities in Schenectady and were given to the mayor and the police chief in early July. While portions of some of the demands have been addressed, the five items below have not received a proper response and, in some cases, have been altogether ignored. End of all ticket writing incentive programs, speed traps, schemes, parking violation, and traffic stops for petty violations. End to all non-recorded sobriety tests. Abolition of chokeholds and strangleholds for all law enforcement and correction officers inside jails and prisons. There is no reasonable justification for using either of these tactics. Ban shooting at moving vehicles. Require all force be reported with racial data capture for both the law enforcement officer or correction officer and the injured party, and reviewed by the civilian police review board, with full access to unreadacted files and evidence, and the power to submit to the Attorney General for further review, investigation, and potential changes of charges. Without these five items, the current police reform is wholly inadequate. It is instead a weak attempt that will be unsuccessful in addressing the longstanding issues embedded in the culture of the police department." Thank you. From Paul Kazey, he writes, "I appreciate all the work that went into creating the Reform and Reinvention Collaborative recommended reports, and I also recognize that seemingly serious efforts that have been made to address some of the issues that have been raised during the process, and in some cases, long before. With regard to the Schenectady Police Department's official response to the thirteen demands that were presented by leaders of the All of Us Community Action Group, I note that several of these demands have been responded to by making reference to existing policy, which seems to ignore the fact that the demands are seeking changes to said policy. My expectation is that the council and members of the Reform and Reinvention Collaborative will take a closer look at these items and continue to press for improvement. I would also like to note for the record that I'm neither a seasoned protester nor a young man filled with newfound political passion. Not that there's anything inherently wrong with either. I'm a senior citizen and a Schenectady resident who recognizes life-threatening injustices, and I expect my city representatives to treat these matters with urgency. Thank you." That is all. The others are on tonight to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Michael.
You're welcome.
If there is anyone that would like to speak on this public hearing, please click on the raise icon, hand icon, and I will recognize you to speak for four minutes. I also would like you to please state your name for the record. I would like to call on Reverend Lynn Gardner. Please proceed. Reverend Lynn Gardner.
Yes, thank you. I'm Reverend Lynn Gardner. Here as a member of the Collaborative Steering Committee and Schenectady Clergy Against Hate. I'm a Unitarian Universalist minister. I'm white, queer, middle-class, currently able-bodied, cisgender resident of Schenectady. This past year has included many challenges, tragedies, and losses. It has also included some opportunities for change and for movement toward collective liberation. I don't want to live in a world where only some of us get to thrive. A culture of white supremacy and systems of oppression impact us all and hold far too many down. So I gladly volunteered to add my presence, time, and energy to serve on the Steering Committee with a commitment to listen to my neighbors' experiences and stories and to add my voice to those calling for a more just way of creating a safer community. I am grateful for the bits of progress that have been made and for the relationships that are slowly growing in trust. It has been difficult, and there is so much more to do. The process of holding community conversations to discuss policing would have been difficult in any circumstances, and to do so during a pandemic was extra challenging. I offer gratitude for all those who participated and encourage everyone to be part of conversations going forward. Hopefully, that those are conversations that are actually public, where we can see one another, not just see the people who are on the panel. Show up, listen, speak when you have a story to share. I'm greatly concerned about the many biases present in aspects of the research, specifically the survey by the Finn Institute and their resulting report. Rather than creating a survey that addressed questions regarding racism in policing relevant to the governor's executive order, they asked questions that could be compared to surveys they had previously used in Schenectady. This may have added to their research but did not address the needs of the community. There was no opportunity for comments in the survey, and their survey was filled out mostly by white people over forty-five, hardly fully representative of Schenectady's residents. Their language used in their report reflects conscious or unconscious bias in phrases that are often coded rather than being explicit and transparent. For instance, on page two, they wrote, "Insofar as crime and disorder are disproportionately concentrated in some segments of society, police, citizen contacts, and their consequences will likewise be disproportionately concentrated in those same segments of society." If some segments of society refer to Black, Indigenous, and people of color, then in fact, studies have shown that contacts with police actually are disproportionate to their white neighbors. You can see "The New Jim Crow" by Michelle Alexander and other books for many examples. Please read the Finn Report with a critical eye and choose a new research partner for the city in the future. Please consider the recommendations that you have before you. Know that they're only a start and could be much stronger. As we continue to transform policing, we need more voices from the community included. There needs to be time for more responses. We need to tend to our relationships, not just to timelines. This will require intention, accountability, and care. It will require commitment to anti-racism. Those of us who are often comfortable need to risk being uncomfortable, which is different than being unsafe. Together, we can work toward a safer and stronger Schenectady. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, but if you can lower your audio, there's a background, feet coming in.
I've connected almost. Shoot. Is there still feedback?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so I'll keep it brief. I'm gonna step away from my computer in case that helps. Three things. I support the All of Us thirteen demands. I agree that they should be completely pursued. I think they're rational. You know, this is a majority-minority community. It needs to be focused on certain community-related policing. Second, you know, I read through it pretty briefly, but the things I would say are that...
It seems as though your audio is not working properly. I would like to pause you and then I will come back to you later. Can you please fix your audio? Jamaica Miles.
Good evening.
Please proceed.
You can hear me, yes?
Yes, we can.
These recommendations, in theory, would be the foundation for changes to policing moving forward. Unfortunately, these recommendations do not go nearly far enough to show the community that the city is serious about ending police brutality and the racial disparities in policing. These recommendations, all of which were not published on the city website until 5:00 PM this past Friday, with little to no effort from the mayor or the police chief to make sure the community was aware of the recommendations or would have time to actually review them. During 2020, Schenectady saw community members from all walks of life fill the streets demanding change. While the names of Ahmaud Arbery, George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Nina Pop, and many others filled the air, there was also the names and stories of local tragedies such as Andrew Kears that took three years to even get an apology. Andrew Kears, as many of us know, died in the back of a Schenectady police car in 2017 after saying, "I can't breathe." While that case gained media attention, other residents in Schenectady shared their personal stories at rallies across the city, including at City Hall, the police station, and the county jail. In response to the statewide rallies, the protests, and ongoing tension, Governor Cuomo, Executive Order 23, that's where we are right now, which states in part that each locality must consult with stakeholders with emphasis in areas with high numbers of police and community interactions, and create a plan to adopt and implement the recommendations resulting from its review and consultation. Said plan is to be tailored to the specific needs of the community and general promotion of improved police agency and community relations based on trust, fairness, accountability, and transparency, and which seeks to reduce any racial disparities in policing. Well, that's not what we have here. The city of Schenectady is not living up to the objective. The city of Schenectady is not living up to the objectives of the executive order, is not working collectively to create changes in policing, changes to address racial disparities and police brutality. In the draft of the recommendations report from the mayor and the chief of police, because that's who it's from, it reads, "In conjunction with independent research and work of the John Finn Institute for Public Safety, the recommendations put forth signify the acknowledgement of community needs." Well, guess what? This fails to acknowledge the local research and work of All of Us or the NAACP. The report in its entirety is not, quote-unquote, "tailored to specific needs of the community," and it especially does not address the high needs of police-community interactions. Chief Clifford repeatedly stated that he alone has the final decision regarding what recommendations will be presented to the city council for approval before being sent to the governor's office. He refused to include a peer review of the Finn Institute's findings without any basis to do so and did so unilaterally without discussion. Chief Clifford can be heard stating, "There will not be a vote or consensus for the process." How very undemocratic of him, even though that's not what the executive order put forth. It's been more than nine months that we have seen the summer of 2020, and even before that, months of people in the streets demanding change, demanding Black Lives Matter, demanding that we defund the police. But instead, what we have is the mayor, Gary McCarthy, and police chief Clifford continuing to ignore the voices of Black people, poor people, and homeless people. Mayor McCarthy and chief Clifford spent money on an outside consultant when the very community was already doing the work, work that I personally have been doing for at least a decade, and our community refuses to be ignored. This time is now to end racism, to end white supremacy, to end police brutality, and not to put forward a document that is simply making a joke of this process. Even now, we continue to get more petition signatures that you all have had for months, which actually outnumber that of the Finn Institute, and it does emphasize the areas of high needs of police and those that live with negative experiences with the police. So I implore this city council to do more, to do better, to demand that what goes forward to the governor actually has some substance to it, that it includes the All of Us thirteen demands that were created based on the experiences of people harmed by the Schenectady police, that the changes the mayor and the chief have proposed do not come close to addressing the community's needs, that the All of Us thirteen demands, current annotated version that is not covered in the recommendations, that has been submitted again to this body and again to the police chief, be included in the final version of the report, as well as being sure that is included in what goes to the governor.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Please proceed.
Hello. Good evening.
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Yes. For generations, Black and Brown parents have given their children the talk, instructing them never to run down the street, always keep your hands where they can be seen, do not even think of talking back to a stranger, all out of fear of how an officer with a gun will react to them. I am an African-American parent of a son, and every day I worry, not just because my son walks the street, but there are so many police officers with guns, and if they happen to come up to him, he's a Black man, that he might not come home at night. I understand that being a police officer may be a difficult job, but being an African mother, an African-American mother, is a very difficult job in this climate today, hoping that our children will come home safe. The work that has been done, I will say it's notable for all, the chief, the mayor, the members of the community who participated in focus groups, that it's noteworthy. We've started the process of dealing with the executive order of the governor. However, there is still a lot of work yet to be done. These issues was not created overnight, and they're not going to get fixed with a rush job. Everybody has to be heard, and to provide a document on a Friday evening and ask the community to be prepared to really make public comments on a Monday evening is just so unfair. It is very typical of our systems today that it's a barrier to get the voices heard that needs to be heard. The starting point has been done. We know, we give you kudos for that, but there is still a lot yet to be done, as I indicated. The NAACP, which I am involved in, is working on some recommendations along with All of Us. We're all, you know, we have the same goal, because at the end of the day, we are a society that we want to and should want to really exist and coexist together in harmony. But the way the systems are working, it is not working for African-American and Black and Brown people. So I ask this board tonight to hold off on any decisions, to have another public hearing, so everybody can be heard, and that the thing that is sent forth to the governor is really reflective of the community at large. And that is what I'm asking for you to do tonight, to let's continue the dialogue briefly, not for another three or four months, just another week or two, so that we can really look at the document. And of course, the Finn Institute is an institute that had a relationship with Schenectady City for quite a while. They are not objective, and we need to look at their input, because it was not a great input in regards to the community at large. Thank you for your time.
Sean Young, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
All right. So I guess a couple of things. I won't stay on long. As I think about, well, first, I support the thirteen demands, and I believe that the thirteen demands should be a part of this discussion. But getting into what we've seen coming out of the Steering Committee, out of the task force, my concern is not just that what come out of the task force doesn't actually, I think, address many of the needs in the community, but that it almost does the exact opposite in some senses, because it asks, in my opinion, and I think the chief even speaks to it in a newspaper article in the Daily Gazette, it's kind of asking for more resources to the police department, asking our officers to take on more responsibility, to get more special training as far as the concerns mental health calls. I don't think that's something that we need to do. I believe that if there are going to be more resources allocated anywhere, it should be in addressing the conditions in which the interactions happen in the first place, not on the back end when the interaction actually happens. I believe that when we think about changing or reforming our society or organizing differently, I think that we need to start thinking about making sure we have more mental health counselors in the community, we have more economic opportunity, we have, you know, more of anything other than having an armed person approaching a community member to address their, address some sort of need. What we've seen, I think, historically is that the interactions are harmful to the person. I want to point out another thing is the CPRB. This is not, I think, a part of the discussion in the task force, but I think it's something that we need to be thinking about when we're talking about an independent party that can address officer misconduct, that has the concerns of any relationship with someone in the community. I feel like the CPRB, as it's currently constituted, wouldn't be, doesn't go far enough. I think that CPRB should have subpoena power, and they should be able to subpoena testimony and evidence, and they should be able to investigate, and it all means possible any kind of harm done to someone in the community. And I think that they should have some binding power as a concern of disciplinary, and I understand that the chief, right now, is the person that's in control of the punishment matrix, the disciplinary matrix, but I think that the CPRB should have some really, I think, more binding kind of power as a concern of addressing discipline of an officer who causes harm in the community. I think that's important, that's something you should look at. And more recently, in Albany, they passed a local law, J, that has language that they've developed around this very thing, and I ask that this body take a look at that. I also second the last speaker's idea about, you know, maybe having another hearing, so that we can, that we can hear more from the public, because it was released on Friday here, it is Monday for public comment, there's not a lot of people on this call, and that's a reason, there's a reason for that. I also want to point out that it was very difficult to get on this call. Like, it was very, for me, to get on this call, and I know people that could help me out with it, but it was difficult. I had to, I had to create an account here, and then I had to register here, and it was just like, wait a minute, we got, like, just to have an opportunity to speak to my representatives about what I think the needs are in the community, what my concerns are, as I think that we should take a look at that and make sure that we're, make, you know, make sure that this is an accessible body, that the public can come and have their voices heard. I think that's very important in a democratic society, and I'm sure you all do too. And I understand Webex has, for, you know, for some time been a problem, and we should be thinking about doing something different, and I'm hoping that you all, you all are going to do that in the future. I'll restate the fact that I'm hoping that there will be a second hearing, that the public can attend and may comment about what's coming out of the task force. I also want to, I guess I'll add another point is that, you know, the task force was co-chaired by the mayor and the chief. I mean, when you think about it, those are two folks that necessarily didn't think there would need to be a bunch of changes in the first place. In other communities, we've seen the community members be co-chair of it and actually lead those conversations. I mean, and if you look at the executive order two or three, that's kind of what the point was, that make emphasis on the community, to put the emphasis on the community and hear what the community had to say about the changes. And that didn't really happen here, and I'm hopeful that this body also realizes that this deadline is just one, and there's much more, you know, much more that will be done, that should be done, and I hope you all take it upon yourselves to push for more things like more power to the CPRB in order to address misconduct in the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, I have a few comments. I'll start out with a positive one about community policing. But community policing is a very difficult thing to do because it is based on changing attitudes, practices, and developing cooperation and partnership with people in communities. Community policing is based on an involvement in the community, and it would move Schenectady in the opposite direction from the militarization of local police. A military approach pits the community as the enemy against the police, and I feel that is often the case. The community needs to be involved as an ally, but it is going to take huge changes to make that happen. Mental health intervention. We are all aware of the many tragedies that have happened when police have inappropriately responded to mental health interventions and have ended in tragedy. Mental health interventions need to be removed from police functioning. It's talked about in the report as a team. It needs to be a team of mental health workers, EMTs. It needs to be people with expertise in how to de-escalate and communicate with somebody who's having an emotional meltdown. And to do that, you would also have to retrain 9/11 staff who are used to referring all calls to the police, and even people calling often request the police because they don't know of a different way to deal with it. So we need to develop a whole system if we're really going to do something about improving interventions with mental health. And a lot of the interactions with police do involve mental health. In addition, issues like homelessness and addiction are also issues that very often involve the police, although not always appropriately at all. What do you need to involve with homelessness? You need to involve people that work in housing advocacy, people that run shelters, organizations like City Mission. If you're going to solve the issue of a homeless person, and the same thing with addictions, there are beginnings of trying to deal with an addiction as a condition rather than a reason for putting people in jail. So I would urge that these issues be taken out of the police department, and they can't exist without funding for new resources. Okay, use of force, which has been an issue that has grabbed a lot of attention, and there are some things in the report, no longer can there be pressure on wind pipes or blocking the mouth or the nose, no hog ties, no knees to the neck, which we're very aware of what can happen with that. Now, the issue is, how do you implement and hold the police accountable for those things? In addition, there needs to be an elimination of the no-knock warrants. They have also ended in tragedy that we're very aware of. And it's mindless to think about eliminating shooting at moving vehicles. Shooting at moving vehicles is something that is a threat to the civilian population, not to mention who might be in that car. So we need to stop that. Accountability and transparency. There has to be transparency that involves the history of individual police officers and any of their reported mishaps or misbehaviors. Now, the police unions and the DAs often, often play a very strong responsibility in only rationalizing police misbehavior. They, there has to be some accountability built into the system that involves tremendous amounts of change. There needs to be, an important element of accountability is civilian review board. To have a successful civilian review board, you need to give powers to that civilian review board. They need to have the power to investigate. They need not to be dependent on the results of a police investigation. They need to have independence. It's also helpful if they have some funding, and it should be acknowledged, that's a very difficult position for the people that are on that board.
Can I please have you summarize? You are about over your four-minute limit.
Training needs to be ongoing, and you need to screen hiring of police officers, so you screen out overly aggressive candidates, you stream out extremists and racists, and that training is ongoing and involves the community in training. Thank you.
Thank you. Michaela Foster, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Michaela Foster. I use they/them pronouns only. I have lived in Schenectady all twenty-two years of my life, and I've spent my entire life in the streets of Mont Pleasant and Hamilton Hill and all over Schenectady. And I am going to be as frank as possible, because I feel and have seen the amount of effort and work it puts in to even find these quote-unquote "public forums" and to be a part of a task force that is not made truly public. So I'm going to be as frank as possible. I'm disgusted with the amount of excuses made and time spent laboring over supposed logistics as opposed to actually doing the work to be intentionally anti-racist in the city of Schenectady. These recommendations do not speak for the people of Schenectady at large. How could they, when they had no idea that the task force was even happening? They have no idea that this, this public forum is happening. They had little to no input in anything that happened. Our thirteen demands from All of Us have more signatures, views, and shares than the Finn Institute's survey did. There has been public discourse on criticisms for both the Finn Institute and the quote-unquote "democratic" process of the task force, which was not democratic, because it didn't matter if we came to a consensus or not, which we did not, on nearly every single recommendation put forward by the task force. We did not, we were not allowed to take votes. We were considered, oh, what's the word I'm looking for? Just, we were there for brainstorming, but were not truly listened to, and the task force itself was not accessible to community members outside of those who were handpicked to join. I was on the task force and not even receive an invitation to every meeting. This is not- This is not, this is not good work. I echo that there is some some merit to what is being said in in the the beginning of a process, but these conversations have been happening for centuries. And I personally stand for, as myself, a member of different marginalized communities and the marginalized communities of Schenectady and the capital region and New York State and the nation. It's, it's ridiculous to me that we are even talking about recommendations that that no one knows about, that nobody knows about, that no one put their hands into, that no one was able to lead a conversation about. But the protests, community conversations, and time spent between all of us, the NAACP, other LGBTQ-led organizations, other people, other independent organizers, other community members in the city of Schenectady in the most marginalized areas are being overlooked because they are in the form of thirteen demands and other demands that aren't even being brought up, that weren't even made by all of us because the chief of police and the mayor are uncomfortable with them. They've spent no more than five minutes addressing them in their quote-unquote "public slideshow." They refused or almost refused to even put them as as a formal document in the the final report, not even to just meet them or implement them or get the ball rolling on meeting the demands, but to even acknowledge that they happened and they were written and they were collected by a process that we were made to prove. While everything that all of us has done has been transparent. So I am gonna be as frank as possible and try not to take up too much more time because I feel like this is a waste of time. The CPRB needs powers such as subpoena powers, funding, and needs to not be involved with the police. It needs to not be set up or um or impacted by the police, who are biased and will continue to protect police and police culture. The thirteen demands need to be looked at, read, and implemented. There are so many things that we need to be doing, and funding the police even more is not one of them. Finding more officers to handle mental health crises is not what we need to be doing. Nothing about this report is progressive. Nothing about this involves community input beyond what the maybe thirty people who were actually on the task force and the ten people who talked. This is not good work, and I'm honestly disappointed in the elected officials of Schenectady for acting as if this is some progressive saving grace when it is not. It is not because it didn't involve anybody who was disproportionately and the most marginalized in Schenectady County, including myself. I'm a trans person. I have experienced police brutality at the age of fourteen from SPD. I'm black. I live in poverty. And during this pandemic, the chief of police and the mayor received salary increases while I have been hungry, while people have been dying, while Yegeshwar Gander Prasad had a knee on his neck by an SPD police officer, where it took two, three years to get a two-minute apology for the death of Andrew Kierce, who was murdered, where I've been in personal calls with elected officials where they told me to, the only way to move forward is to forget the past. The only way to move forward is to defund the police and reallocate those funds to community-based resources to be intentionally anti-racist, and I don't mean, I don't mean a twenty-one-week anti-racism challenge led by a white police officer. I mean anti-racism intentionally every day for the rest of everyone's life. I have a lot more to say, but I urge, I urge this body and I urge the mayor and the chief to listen carefully when I say that there needs to be another conversation because even me and the other, the other members of our community who have sat on on this, on this public forum and in the task force, that's not enough. There is an entire city out there looking to be heard, and we are making excuses. Excuse after excuse after excuse, like just so many logistical issues that don't seem to happen for other, for other things. So that is how, what I have to say about this. I'm highly disappointed, and I urge everyone to actually take, take some time to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Kiana Beckles.
Oh.
Please proceed.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. I I didn't um quite know that I would be able to get on this meeting and speak. And I just, so I just have one question. Uh, my name is Kiana Beckles, and I am the chair of the Blacks and I O Law Enforcement Task Force. We came together at the end of last summer, really just um wanting to uh be able to do more. I mean, I think that we were all tired of sitting and being spectators. So we are a group of about twenty black industrial organizational psychologists. Um, and industrial organizational psychologists are the folks who design police selection tests. Um, we design, we're, we basically design human resource processes. Um, so we came together to really try to work on the how in the police reform space. And I just had a question about the FINN report, which I've been going through. Um, and my question was about the perceptions survey. And I think that the question might have been answered by one of the speakers, but I wanted to know why um it was not broken down by ethnicity. The initial perceptions of service, survey, um, which speaks about procedural justice, um, was, it seems like everybody in the city is just lumped together. And I, I'm wondering why there wasn't a breakdown by ethnicity, considering that this was, you know, the whole call to action. I think one of the other challenges too is that when we do things in a hurry, um, which I know that the, you know, the governor's executive order has a, has an April first deadline in there, so everybody's rushing, rushing. But people have a, have a tendency to rely on their existing templates. And when they do that, unfortunately, you're gonna get much of the same, right? So I agree with everyone, you know, we have to get about the work of reinventing the way, the how, the how in 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 how policing is done. We have to go beyond the policies. It's, it's not just policies, it's not just laws. A lot of these laws are things that we've had on the books. Um, but we have to get into the work of the day-to-day police work and 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 how it's gonna be done on a daily basis. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Melanie Trumbull, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, although we at the Civil Liberties Union reserve specific comment on this plan until our organization has had the opportunity to give it the careful scrutiny it demands, we'll make the following comments at this time. The mass mobilization of New Yorkers demanding justice for black lives propelled New Yorker lawmakers to finally act on a long overdue police reform measures to increase transparently transparency and accountability. Important as these measures are, it is clear that reforms alone are not sufficient to address the cultural and structural problems inherent in law enforcement. We would remind you that executive order two oh three not only demands reform, but more importantly, reinvention. If your plan does not contain a bold vision for radically changing our approach to policing, then you have failed to meet your responsibility. I will address here just a small sample of many issues that every executive order two oh three plan in the state should address. First is data collection. You must include demographics of all police encounters, whether or not any ticket is issued or arrest made. And data must be freely and regularly available to the public with only the most limited amount of redaction. In addition, data must not be used to increase community surveillance. Uh, in use of force, there must be strict regulation, review, and enforcement of you use of force policies with special scrutiny of law officers who are most often involved in such incidences. The civilian complaint review board, this body must be truly independent and not beholden to the police department, having its own budget, staff, investigative powers, and the ability to discipline officers. Mental health incidents, police should not be the default response to every mental health or domestic call. Mental health professionals should take the lead in calls that do not threaten immediate violence. Demilitarize the police. Police are meant to be peace officers, not warriors. We must seek to shift funding to address such social issues as physical and mental health needs, housing, and food insecurity, student discipline, and inequities in education and employment. Thank you for your attention. Over the coming weeks and months, we hope to engage productively with you to foster a truly new vision for public safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Daniel Carlson.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good. So um, my name is Reverend Daniel Carlson. I am the uh, one of the ministers at the First Reform Church of Schenectady uh in the downtown area. I'm also a member of Schenectady Clergy Against Hate. Um, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak at this hearing. Um, I will limit my comments uh to the fact that it was very difficult to get into this meeting tonight. I um struggled to do so and and consider myself fairly adept technologically, but um had multiple uh issues uh to actually access the meeting. Um, and I also found it very difficult to um rearrange a schedule to allow myself to be here at such short notice. Um, therefore, I would urge that the uh city council uh offer additional opportunities for hearing from the public, the general public. I echo uh those concerns already expressed by Michaela. Um, and I specifically would ask that the uh city council and the police particularly listen to those uh communities and people who are most impacted uh by uh the policing uh of Schenectady County. Our congregation has recently been reading a book on James Baldwin, who wisely noted that uh when you want to investigate the effects of our criminal justice system, you don't ask um uh the clergy how it's going, you don't ask uh the politicians how it's going, you don't ask the police how it's going. You ask those people who are most impacted by the effects of policing. And clearly, there is great need for that in the city of Schenectady. I want to commend the work that has already begun on this effort and note that it is work that will go way beyond uh in my estimation and that of others, uh, the the due date uh that the governor has set. Um, it is my hope that that work continues for justice for all and especially those who have historically been oppressed by the culture of white supremacy within um our culture at large and at work yet in Schenectady, indeed within uh so many within our congregation as well as the city. Thank you very much for your time and uh for your work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak with regards to this public hearing? Please raise the hand icon, and I will allow you to speak. If you're unable, you can send me a chat. Patrick Shower.
Yes.
Patrick Shower, are you still there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Uh, sorry about the feedback before. Um, so Gary, Eric, I think I saw you on the line, so I kinda wanna speak directly to you. And what I want you to see this as is a chance for a win-win, you know? Because you are serving a very, very diverse community, and you know, if you're worried about, you know, you want to do these things, you wanna stay in power so that you can do these good things and for the right reasons. The way to do that in a durable sense is to win public trust. So I'm a white guy, you know, I grew up being family friends with the county sheriff. You know, when Ferguson happened, you know, seven-so years ago, my first thought was, wait, am I racist? Are they calling me racist? And since then, I've learned that it's a lot more productive to think less about my feelings, what people, I'm imagining people are telling me and more just focusing on the problem. How can we solve the problem together? And there is a problem. You know, just the statistic that sticks with me, you know, black and white folks use marijuana at the same rate. Black folks are four times more likely to get arrested. So clearly, there is an issue, and I'm willing to give you the benefit of the doubt that you both really care about this. And if that's true, I would say you need to strike while the iron is hot. I doubt there will ever be as good a time for anyone on the council or the mayor or the um the police chief to make as much change as you could today. So three things that I think just would be a very positive, basic uh set of things to do. One, all of us, thirteen demands. There's been a lot of speaking on that. That is the voice of the community. If you want community support, listen to the community. It's pretty simple. Uh, two, accountability. Um, I wanna echo quickly that the civilian review board should have uh really more teeth to it. You know, as if I see my buddy, my coworker do something wrong, I'm probably not gonna call him out, honestly, because he's my buddy, he's my coworker. You need external accountability to have any real accountability at all. Third, you know, as I said, there's this community intervention task force training that I saw in the document, and I don't think adding a little bit of training uh to somebody behind, you know, the wheel of a cruiser carrying around a gun is enough. I think you need specific people tasked to handle things that do not require a weapon, do not require a cruiser. And I think this is really a win-win, you know, you, you hear things like defund the police, abolish the police. Maybe those things are scary to you personally. All that, if to my mind, all that really means is there are things that police should not do. You know, look at Ithaca, Google Ithaca and the police department there, you know? So they did a poll of the police, and they found, hey, we think we're being set up to fail in these situations. The police think this because we're not trained to do it. We are stressed. This is not what we are getting paid for. Um, and so what they propose there is let's have a separate task force under the same management to handle situations that don't require a gun and a cruiser. And it's, it's really simple, and it would make your lives easier and make your jobs easier, and it would give you more public support. So again, I support the thirteen demands of all of us. Accountability needs to be external, independent, and you need separate folks on payroll to handle uh non-violent, uh non-criminal interactions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Maria Pacheco, please proceed. Please, Maria, please proceed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, I'm Maria Pacheco, and I'm a resident of Schenectady. And um I wanna echo the words of some of the uh neighbors that have expressed already. The last forty-five minutes, I've been trying to get onto this call, and it kept asking me to register, and it wasn't letting me in, so finally, I decided to use my cellphone, and that's what I'm, because I wanted to use my computer uh to to do this. So this should not be this difficult uh for regular citizens to be able to attend this virtual meeting. So I wanna express my disappointment on that, and thank you for finally letting me in. Whoever was, I don't know how it happened. And I want to express that we, as a community, we expect you as our leaders to listen to our voice, our community voice. And we have been expressing that we want for the, for you as our leaders to listen to the thirteen demands that the group, all of us, that we belong to, have put forth in front of you. And to this date, you have failed and you have disappointed us in not bringing this up and listening to us and have a hearing, if perhaps just on these thirteen demands, and taking them one by one. Um, you have a task force that I don't know how people got on that. And I, as a regular citizen, was not invited to that, don't even know when those meetings are. Um, and so I will, I would like to be more involved. I would like to, as a regular citizen, being able to say, hey, that's when that meeting is. I wanna be there. I wanna give my voice. And I signed a petition for the thirteen demands to be listened to by our leaders, and to this date, we have been ignored, and that is not acceptable. Now, I know that you all get scared when you hear that we wanna defund the police. Right? Perhaps we are using the wrong term. We want to reform the police. We, we want to um use some of that funding, overfunding of the police, perhaps for our school district. Right? So we could rethink, we could reimagine what our police force should be. And they should be peacekeepers. We don't need army equipment for our police. And I would like for us to look at the police and to study how we can reform it and in a way that they can really be people who we can look up to in terms of helping us, not be scared. I have a situation in which I will need the police because of mental illness of a relative, and I will never do it because I am afraid that my relative will be killed by the police when all they need is be able to be transported perhaps to the hospital because I can't. So I want to get the fear. I want to not have that fear. I want to get that fear to be away from my mind that if I need the police, I can call the police and they will help me, not hurt me and my family. So I urge you to reconsider to have another meeting of this kind because today, like I said, 45 minutes, I was not able to get in. You have not included the 13 demands in whatever it is that you're formulating. Also, we need more time, we need more involvement, we need more community voice. And thank you so much for letting me talk.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak with regards to public hearing number one? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing number one closed. Public hearing number two, regarding the acceptance of ownership for the Nard and Drive. Ms. Maico, were there any comments submitted for this public hearing? Ms. Maico?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear.
There were no comments submitted.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak on public hearing number one? Please click on the hand icon and I will release you to speak on this item. Seeing none, I declare public hearing number two closed. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mutiveren. I'm just, I'm seeing in the chat that Pastor Nicole said she raised her hand for number one.
Pastor Nicole, please proceed. Pastor Nicole Harris.
Hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, thank you so very much. Yes, so I want to respond. As you know, I am the pastor of Dory Memorial, as I stated before. But I also wear the hat of being the president of the local branch of the NAACP. And so that is the hat that I'm wearing at this moment as I respond. In my prayer, in the invocation that you asked me to do tonight, I stated that we have two ears and one mouth for a reason. And I was listening tonight, and I certainly hope that you were listening as well to what the people, the residents of this city are saying about their desire for transparency and for more things to be done as it pertains to police reform in this city. You know, they've spoken about the demands from all of us. I need to listen to all of us. It's not just you as the council that have to, that should listen to them. I need to listen as the president of the NAACP because they represent the community that I have said that I will serve. So I want to ask you, can you continue? You can still hear me, yes?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
I want to ask you to put forth the extra effort that they're asking you to put forth. That's what I really am hearing tonight, again, you know, with the two ears, is them saying, we need you to put forth more effort with this because, you know, people have talked about the information going out on Friday and it being Monday about the 13 demands being, well, it sounds like being essentially ignored. And this work, we know that this work is not easy, police reform work, justice work, all of these things, none of this is easy. We're not going to be able to check off a box and say, yeah, got that done? That's done and over with? No, it's going to take more work. And so we have to be committed to the work of ending the problems that exist within our policing practices, not just on a local level, but on a national level, but let's do our part locally. And I think that's what they're asking to be done. I read an article not too long ago about there being a pushback when there were things brought up about the review board. You know, you guys got a lot of work to do. And I think that it includes listening to the residents and listening to the members of all of us and listening to the members of NAACP which are, who are on this call tonight. And when you ignore what they say, that's just you showing we're not listening to you. And that's not respectable. And so I'm asking you to listen and to act upon what you heard. I know what I heard tonight. And you heard the same thing I just heard, which was people asking you to go to do more because it's going to take doing more for this problem to be resolved on a local level and on a national level. Let's do our part locally for police reform. And so there are pieces missing to, you know, to the reporting, obviously. You know, I understand you've done some work and perhaps, you know, you feel a certain way, well, we've done some work and you guys are telling us all the things we've done wrong. I'm not saying you've done everything wrong, but I'm saying there's more that needs to be done. And so I'm asking you to consider that tonight and to not let their voices not be heard. And as the president of the NAACP, I want to let you know that I'm going to support the voices that I heard tonight and hold you accountable because I heard the same thing you heard. So don't act like you didn't hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, and my apologies for passing on that. Public hearing number three, regarding the 2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Mutiveren, I hate, I'm sorry to keep interrupting, but there's things popping up in the chat and I don't know if that's being monitored, but I see that there was another speaker who is Brianna Brinker. So I'm not sure if the hand raising isn't working or what the situation is, though. But I do see another speaker who wanted to speak, and I'm assuming it's on that first public hearing.
Is it Brianna Brinker or Adam Brinker?
Brianna.
Please proceed.
Thank you. My name's Brianna Brinker. I would just wanted to, I couldn't find the hand raise function and been trying to kind of find a way to get my point across that I'd like to say something. I also, on that subject, I feel that, I feel the same frustrations a lot of other people feel about the quickness of this, of the basically nontransparency of it. We just had a, I had a difficult time finding it. I, there's just not a lot of information about it. There wasn't even a lot of information about the task force itself that was out there. And it's just, you know, this is somewhat of a difficult platform for me personally. I've been on a bunch of different platforms during this pandemic, and this is by far the most difficult one. But you have to do what you have to do. I do want to mention that I do very much support the 13 demands of the All of Us Community Action Group. I think it's the most extensive research and the extensive community research and extensions that I've seen in all my years of living here. There's, they've touched all portions of our community, and I believe this should be taken very seriously. I do feel that there's more hearings are needed and those need to be discussed thoroughly by the task force, by the everybody in charge. It just doesn't seem, it just doesn't seem, as a community resident, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of transparency there. It just seems like it's going on and behind closed doors. And it just doesn't seem that that's the healthiest piece of this. I do feel that the, to have the mayor and the police chief on a board that's supposed to be reforming the actual police department is just counterproductive. I think that it's just the optics of it alone, let alone what actually really happens. I'm not on it. I can go by what I'm hearing from the people that are on it. But you can't, it's just, it can't be productive to have the people in charge on a task force that is there to reform the actual department. So I, it just, it just doesn't look good. And we all know that the police department, they're very, they're a tight community. Basically, there's a lot of peer pressure to stay in line and to cover it up for each other. A lot of it stems, there's a lot of toxic masculinity into that environment. And I think that's a very difficult place for people to speak up and do the right thing when a wrong is committed. And there's examples of that all over the place and all over TV the past several months, actually, almost a year here. So I think that's, it's important that we use the time that you have to massage this a little bit and to make it better, make it more complete, and do the best you can to get all voices heard. And the 13 demands have been there for a long time. Everybody's had a chance, you've had a chance to take a look at it. The only thing I can deduce from that is you just don't want to do it. This should be at least talked.
Can I have you please summarize?
I'm finished. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Jengat Khan, please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I have a request at some point as appropriate, whether it's now or later in your meeting agenda. Can you clearly state what the remaining time is and the next steps that will be happening concerning these recommendations? Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, I remind the public and anyone who are not able to join this evening to please continue to submit your comments to our city clerk. The email address can be found on the website, and I encourage you to do that. Thank you very much. We'll move to public hearing number three, regarding the 2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Ms. Tia, were there any comments submitted for this public hearing?
There were not.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this public hearing? Please indicate by raising the hand icon. Seeing none, I declare public hearing number three closed. May I have approval for the minutes for February 22nd, 2021? Motion by?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Maico, can you please read any communication and petition that you may have?
Communications presented to the city council from Monday, March 8th, 2021. Under official, there were none. Dear General, From a few neighbors on Glenwood Boulevard, a letter and newspaper article regarding 1236 Glenwood Boulevard that needs to be shoveled. Under petitions, there were none. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports from my colleagues.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Go ahead.
If, thankfully, for all those that have responded to their congressional leaders, I want to say thank you and might want to reach out to them. The stimulus package was passed while there's things in it some may or may not like. The good news for the city is it does help us. What the specifics are is yet to be seen, but it is good news and positive for the city. And just wanted to let everybody know that some relief is coming to the city and to thank our congressional leaders for getting this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues? Thank you. We'll move to privilege of the floor related to legislative agenda. Ms. Maico, do you have any submission for the legislative agenda, and if so, can you please read?
No, Mr. Mutiveren, there were no, nothing submitted.
Is there anyone who would like to speak for the matter related to legislative agenda? Please raise the hand icon. Jamaica Miles, I see your hand. Would you like to speak on the legislative agenda? Jamaica Miles?
No, I did not have my hand up.
Oh, sorry. Seeing none, I declare this portion closed. Thank you. Can I have the approval for the legislative consent agenda? A motion?
Moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Aye.
We have one resolution for our call this evening. If the clerk can please read item number eight.
Item number eight for original consideration. A resolution authorized in the city of Schenectady to assign interest to 133 Edison Avenue to Schenectady Metroplex Development Authority and the Land Utilization Corporation of the Capital Region.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion?
We flushed that one.
Ms. Maico, can you please follow the rules?
Ms. Porterfield?
Aye.
Ms. Woski-Walzunis.
I need to abstain from this vote based on my seat on the Metroplex Board. It does appear to be a conflict for me personally, so it's a great project, it's a great move and I'm fully supportive of, but I need to abstain.
Ms. Patrick.
Aye.
Mr. Palamini.
Yes.
Mutiveren.
Yes. The item is passed. Thank you. We'll move to privilege of the floor regarding general city business. Ms. Michael, do you have any submission from the public regarding city business and if so, can you please read?
No, Mr. Mutiveren, there were no submissions.
Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding city business? Please click on the hand icon. Maline Gilmore, please proceed.
Yes, good evening. There are two items that I would like to briefly discuss. I'll go with the worst one first and end up with the best. Number one, on February eighteenth, during the ticket blitz, we had two tickets written. I live on Emmett Street, eight thirty-sixth Emmett to be specific. Two tickets were written for a car for my niece who, to slap in the face, was that the woman is an essential worker. And the parking situation in eighteen years, I've never got a ticket. But suddenly, February eighteenth, at two AM, now the alternate parking is from one AM to six AM. I don't understand what happens between one AM and six AM. But however, if you want to do alternate side of the street parking during the spring, during the summer, and even the fall, I can understand it. But the winter, where the snowplow comes down in the middle of the street and going back to the essential worker that got the ticket, she couldn't go to work one day because we didn't see the snowplow for almost a day and a half. And that was during the major storm. So please, please, let's do something about the ticketing. Again, the fall, the spring, and the summer. But when we're moving the cars from side to side, what are we moving it for? Just to see if we can do it? Is it an exercise in futility? I never see the streets we were coming. I think I, well, I'm telling a tale. I saw it once in the eighteen years that I've been here. So the ticket thing, it doesn't, it just doesn't sit right with me and something needs to be done about that. And again, if we're moving the cars back and forth, let's have us move them for a reason. But good note is, I'm a member of Refreshing Spring Church and have been so for numbers of years. And we have a piece of property on Germania Avenue. And we, in an effort to turn the blight into light, we've joined with a power-packed group of folks from Albany and they're interested in partnering up with us to put in a twenty-first century of garden. And it will be absolutely fantastic and it will do something again about turning the light on our blight. And my goodness, the aesthetic, the aesthetic value will be something to see. But again, please, please consider the ticketing situation and stay tuned for turning the light on the blight. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak with regards to city business? Please click on the raise hand icon and I will allow you to speak. Seeing none, I declare this portion closed. I will move into miscellaneous business from my colleague. Please unmute yourself.
Mr. Mutiveren.
Please proceed.
So I want to, I want to start out by, by thanking the steering committee for all the hard work and the inordinate amount of time that was spent on this reform process. I attended most of the meetings and, you know, there was lively conversation and a lot of hard work done. I believe that the thirteen demands are within this report along with a lot of testimonials. I also believe that all of the steering committee meetings are up on YouTube and usually that is done either that afternoon or at least by the following day. So all of the, all of the meetings can be viewed online. I want to remind everyone that, you know, this is the beginning of the process. This is not the end. You know, there's, you know, the governor gave us a timeframe and we're following the timeframe and the police chief and the mayor are committed to change. I believe that this is not the end. The dialogue will continue and there will be more change coming as the community and the police department and, and us as elected officials meet with the community, you will start to see that. But as I said, this is the beginning. This is not the end of what, what we're going to be doing in reference to change with the, within the police department or within the city and how we're looking at things. So I did want to make sure I said that. I also, you know, want to thank everyone who spoke this evening. I appreciate that and I appreciate being able to hear everyone. It is difficult in these, in this time of a pandemic, but, you know, I think it was a Herculean task that was overtaken and we can declare some success here. I also want to, you know, remind everyone that St. Patrick's Day is coming up and that we have a resolution and that the Ancient Order of Hibernian is going to be serving drive-up corned beef and cabbage meals starting at twelve o'clock. So I do not believe you can reserve, but you can check out the Ancient Order of Hibernian Facebook page. It is only a week away and next week is St. Patty's Day. So I want to remind everyone of that. I also want to thank Tom Carey for his editorial in the paper the other day in reference to the straight, the safe streets. And, you know, I look forward to the state allowing us to change the speed limit so that we can start to take more control of speeding in the, in the city. So with that, I am, I am done, Mr. Mutiveren. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues?
Mr. Mutiveren.
Please proceed.
I also want to thank all the members of the steering committee for all the work that they've been doing over these last several months. There was just a lot of community meetings. There were a lot of, it was a lot of work and so I really appreciate, I know that all of us here on council attended just about all the meetings as well, so it was good to hear from so many people about all of the policies and procedures as we, as we move forward. And I also want to second that we see this as something that's going to be ongoing, past the time that we have to, you know, adhere to the April first deadline, but the work itself is going to continue, you know, past that. So I appreciate everyone that showed up to speak tonight and know that we will be continuing to have this work being done. I also wanted to mention that the library staff and volunteers are over at the library helping folks get appointments for the vaccinations. So I know there's been some news of this in the paper and on social media, but I did want to let folks know that there will be people, there will be staff at the Karen B. Johnson Library, the main library, Tuesday, tomorrow through Friday, from nine AM to four PM to help people try to find some vaccination shots. I've been doing it for the last few days and, and there are, there were appointments available, so that was very helpful to hear from folks over there. The Buont Branch, they'll be doing signups Monday, Wednesday, and Friday during their curbside hours. And at Mont Pleasant, we'll be doing signups on Tuesday, this week on Tuesday and Thursday during their curbside hours. So you can go to the library website at www.scp.com and all of the schedule is there and all the updates are there. And they have a link to the, the Count COVID page at that link as well so that you can get information, more information about the vaccination process that's happening in the county. And then the last thing that I wanted to note was that the Goose Hill Neighborhood Association is holding a neighborhood cleanup on Saturday, April twenty-fourth, all day, most of the day. I can't remember the exact hours, but if you want to volunteer, they're looking for volunteers and you can go to ghna.schenectady@gmail.com to sign up to volunteer to help with that cleanup. And finally, I just wanted to say today's International Women's Day, March is Women's History Month. And so I wanted to give a shout out to my female colleagues on the council for their leadership in the city, Ms. Porterfield and Ms. Woski-Walzunis, and also, you know, just be appreciative of all the work that is happening around the globe today on International Women's Day to try to move the course of equity forward for everyone today. Of course, we're celebrating women, so, so just wanted to mention that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues?
Mr. Mutiveren.
Please proceed.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that came out to speak tonight. As I always say, it's very important to hear from our community, so I appreciate you taking the time and effort. And I'm sorry that you had difficulty getting in, so, because I know we can be trying to deal with technology, so I'm glad that you were able to get in, that you were able to speak. So I just want to just remind folks that of the House bill, seventy-one twenty, the George Floyd Justice of Policing Act, which really was the impetus of what we're doing here today. So if you haven't had the opportunity to read it, because it passed the House June of last year, I just would suggest that you, you just do that. And those of us who are tasked with making sure that reforms go forward and what needs to be in there should take an opportunity to also make ourselves familiar with that particular bill. And there was, there was a lot of comment about the Civilian Police Review Board on tonight's meeting. And so I just want, we, tonight, we called for a public hearing for the CPRB, which is governed by chapter ninety-three of the city code. So if you haven't, don't know about what that reads, certainly take the time to, in the next two weeks, familiarize yourself with chapter ninety-three, because that is what governs the CPRB. What the city council has done at this point is to make some revisions to that, to try to strengthen it. What I'm hearing tonight is that we, there's a lot more work to be done. So the public hearing, again, was called tonight and it'll be on the twenty-second. The document with the revisions was in tonight's packet, but if we needed to send it down again, that's certainly something we could do so people can take a look at it and familiarize themselves and be ready to, to attend the public hearing on the twenty-second. And as we talk about reform and justice and all of that, I just want to, in this instance, say this one thing about that, that we should all think about, that equal rights for others does not mean less for, for, for you. It just, because it's not pie. So we can all have equal rights. We won't run out of it. We just want to be mindful that that is something that we do. So just wanted to, you know, as we think about it, make that statement, because I believe there's, there's fear that comes in sometimes that people feel that if others have rights, that means it's less for them. That's not what it means, because it's not pie. So a couple other announcements. First of all, I just want to congratulate the Carabios Reverend Arroyo and Carlos Carabio for their twenty-two years of service to the community. They have retired from pastoring, but not community work. And there was a very nice event at the church's Sunday. And so there will be a new leadership taking over that church. But again, congratulations to the Carabios for the twenty-two years of work that they've done in this community, including having an office in City Hall. I also want to say congratulations to all women as we celebrate Women's History Month, women locally, women across the globe, just everyone who has contributed to where we are today and continue to contribute. I just, the NAACP, we've been talking about vaccines and I know that some folks are getting them. There's NAACP will be holding a health forum on the twenty-ninth of this month at six thirty PM. It is virtual. And we can, we'll be sending out the links for that and we can send it to the city council, so the city clerk, so people can find, get the information. And so what we'll be talking about is, because we know that in the, in some of the communities of color, there's some hesitancy around the vaccine, so NAACP will present, don't fear, help is here, and it's going to be a COVID nineteen. It's going to be a panel discussion where you'll hear myths versus facts, get some questions answered and hear from community members as well as health professionals. So we invite people to attend on the twenty-ninth at six thirty PM through Zoom and Facebook. The Hamilton Hill Art Center this Sunday, excuse me, this Saturday, the thirteenth, will, is having a craft day. It's again, virtual, so you can go to their website, hhac.org and sign up if you would like to. I just want to remind folks that this Sunday at two AM, we spring ahead, so we turn our clocks an hour ahead. And, and also, again, and I'll be at the green market to, just to hear from folks, to have some interaction. Hopefully, other council members, we will, we can all be there, which starts at ten AM and from ten to ones for that particular table. So inviting folks to come there. And, and speaking of the green market, it's going to start going outside on April eleventh. So as of April eleventh, it'll be outside around City Hall again. Hope it's a little warmer than it is today. And I think that is all that I have and just again, want to thank folks for coming out. Thank you for being engaged and keeping us accountable, because we are accountable to you as, as, as elected officials. So continue to send in comments as we move forward to do this work around the police reform and re-imagine. And it has, as has been said, this will be ongoing work. It's not one and done. So I'm glad the conversation has started. I'm glad this time is open and let's make sure that we take full advantage of this opportunity to make our concerns heard, give suggestions and recommendations. And also, we all know that everyone will not walk away with everything they want, so let's collaborate and, and compromise where we need to, but need to get the work done so there is justice in our community and everyone at the end of the day goes home safe. That's our goal. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other colleagues?
Yeah, Mr. Mutiveren.
Please proceed.
I'd also like to thank all the speakers tonight. It was good to hear from people and hear what they had to say. Been hearing a lot from people I've gone around the community, so a lot of input on an important matter and it's very good to keep getting that information. I'd also like to take part in the celebration of International Women's Day, particularly of some of my former students. Recently got some good news of one of my former graduates who, she's gone on and from her master's degree and got her PhD. So considerably happy for her and all the great work that she's done and hard work that she's put in to accomplish that. And really, really, as a professor, very proud of her for all that she's accomplished and several other students who've also gone on and, and done some very great things. So it's, it's great that we're able to celebrate this and take part in an international celebration of many of the great things that women have contributed to society from the beginning of time. of, uh, many of the great things that women have contributed to, uh, society, um, from the beginning of time. So, uh, it's, it's, uh, I think appropriate that we take some time out and celebrate. And, uh, look forward to hearing more from individuals as they go around the community on the, uh, police reform. So please keep those coming in and, uh, they are being read and listened to and, um, even the conversations. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to, uh, express my appreciation for all the time and effort that so many people have put into this process of police reform and it has been pointed out that this is a, a dynamic process. It's going to continue going forward. In this report is kind of a summary of where we are today and outlining some of the goals that we want to accomplish in the future. But that doesn't mean that there aren't going to be changes to that and other things that we're going to look at and other ways that we're going to work to make the community stronger, better, and make sure that we're fair and equitable in the way we deliver services in the environment that we create within the city of Schenectady. I also, uh, want to, uh, extend my, uh, appreciation to the, uh, members of the New York Congressional Delegation and really the Democratic leadership in Congress and especially our own Senator Chuck Schumer. Because, uh, you know, over the weekend, uh, the House representative is going to formalize it on Wednesday. Congress has finally stepped up to the plate and provided some assistance to state and local governments to deal with those expenses in the loss of revenue that we have faced as a result of this pandemic. And, uh, that would not have happened without Senator Schumer's leadership. You know, there was very strong opposition to that. Some of it really lacked any merit. And it's just unfortunate that there wasn't more common ground, that people came together to deal with this and help us rebound from, uh, the, you know, really difficult times that it's put not only communities, but families and businesses in as we deal with that. And so again, I thank them for that and, uh, look forward to working with the council as we get some of this money in that'll reestablish our fund balance and make up some of the, uh, deficits that we've had and be able to help position the community going forward, uh, for a, you know, strong and, uh, good recovery. And as, uh, both, uh, the president and vice president have said, they want to build back better. So we look forward to working with them to make sure that that happens. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor McCarthy. Like my colleagues, I would also like to take this opportunity to thank all the speaker this evening. These comments are going to be discussed, um, the next, um, steering committee and the city council committee meeting. I do look forward for the continuation of the meaningful dialogue as we conclude the police reform and reinvention. I would also like to thank everyone for their contribution toward the steering committee. A lot of sacrifices, lots of inputs, and a lot of work has been done. So I encourage everyone, let's continue to work towards the final outcome at the end of the day. We're not going to get everything that everyone is putting forward, but at the end of the day, let's compromise, let's move forward and we'll continue to advocate for more changes. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Take care.
Good night, everyone.